6:32 Remondri. We'll open the public meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I believe we have a sign-up sheet if anybody's here for the public hearing. And since we do have a public hearing in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access and on YouTube for eternity. We are absent Mr. Bittner tonight. Can you hear? I've mics on. Hello? Hello?
I believe they're on. I don't know that the in-house volume is up.
Yeah, we just need the volume up. I can speak loudly. There we go. Okay. So, call to order, we're all here except for Mr. Bittner. Public comment. Is there any public comment not related to agenda items tonight? Anyone? Anyone? Any board comment? Okay. Our first order of business is an A&R plan for 190 Electric Avenue. Please.
Hi. My name is Daniel Ruiz. I'm with Capital Group Properties. And we're doing an A&R plan for 190 Electric Ave. As you know, the lot was previously, there's a solar field that's going there that's permitted for this lot right here. The A&R that's being created, there's a lot that is 6.05 acres and another one that is 1.709. And we made sure to check that when we created these lots, it wouldn't affect anything on the solar field. As you know, the solar field is on the other side of this easement, this electric easement right here. So, we made sure when we're on this side to not affect anything with the solar field. This lot is also a non-buildable lot. This one still is a buildable lot. We did receive comments from the Sewer Commission and Board of Health and Conservation Commission. And all their comments basically are when the lots are created, it's for, just to make sure they meet the standard for each of them. And if there's anything to be built on the lots with the Conservation Commission, they would like an NOI.
Okay. That's it?
Any questions?
As far as the solar field, I don't know about the 200-foot buffer. I mean, it's a power line, so it's going to be pretty much clear-cut. But is that, is that going to affect the approval of the solar?
It shouldn't. Because they still have the 200-foot buffer. And if you'll notice, there's a small triangle on the north side that is remaining with the solar field.
And also, as far as buildability of this 1.7-acre lot, do we require the 175 width through the house?
We do, we do, through the house.
So, if this is only 122?
But they, at the very rear, they might have it. They have 100 feet where it's 150 plus the 122.
You may be jeopardizing your buildability, is all I'm getting at.
Okay.
We do require a 175-foot width through the house? Anybody?
Do we have a copy of the comments from the other departments?
I have them here. I just put them down.
Just picking up on your comment, Mr. Chair. At the left-hand corner where the proposed lot meets the power line easement, do we know where the location? I assume that the solar array is beyond the 150-foot power easement.
Yes, it is.
Correct.
Yeah. The entirety of the solar easement is south of the power easement.
Exactly. But how close is it to the edge of the easement? Because I feel like in that corner, if the array is within 50 feet of the power easement...
I see what you're saying.
And not that I think it would be an issue, but I don't want to put the board in a position where we're approving an A&R that basically circumvents the 200-foot buffer.
Well, there's, that we can look into. And there's time to do that between now and the next meeting. The other question that I was going to raise when the board was done is the non-buildable lot, there's no note on what's to be done with it. I know through conversations with yourself and the proposed recipient of it, that it's to be attached to an existing lot to create additional acreage for that homeowner to use.
Both lots are going.
And I understand that. One would qualify as buildable, so that wouldn't be an issue. We can't create a non-buildable landlocked parcel. So, we would need a note on here indicating that it's to be attached to parcel.
To be conveyed to.
Yeah, correct. And that way, it's not creating a non-buildable parcel. You're creating parcel A to be combined with. It's not a lot because it doesn't have frontage.
Okay.
So, that would, before the board endorsed it, that would need to be corrected.
Okay.
And we can verify the distance from the edge of the solar field to the proposed line.
Mm-hmm. So, then the point I brought up about the 175 is moot.
Was there a specific comment you were concerned about?
No, we're going to need to wait for the corrected plan.
And the comments from the Sewer Commission were that any building would be required to pay a privilege fee.
Okay.
The Board of Health said you need adequate sewage and potable water. And the Conservation Commission said, there's wetlands there. If you build anything, there's a 50-foot note. Just standard, be aware of these things. Nothing in regard to the specific proposal.
Okay.
Okay. So, just to make sure. You want the note that this is going to be conveyed?
Correct.
To the lot. And same with this one?
So, I think that back one needs to be called a parcel rather than lot?
Yes, it should be called a parcel.
Okay.
And if you're going to, if you, and again, I'm going to infer that you already have agreements with those two property owners to...
Yes.
Sell. So, it will be cleaner if you indicate that that's what's to happen with them. And then, and if you just include it in that note section, it will be much easier.
Okay. Is that it?
Very good.
And then, in terms of that corner, we just want to see what the offset is.
Yeah.
I'll look at the written dimensions.
Yep. Okay.
Was there a question on the A&R?
Yeah. I'm the buyer of the 6.05.
He needs to...
You'd introduce yourself as well?
Hi, my name is Ray Bissinette. And I'm going to be the purchaser of the little 6-acre lot. Well, my plan is, once I purchase it, I'm going to connect it to Emily Kelly, the property, as you can see right in the middle.
Map 74, Lot 27.
I plan on connecting the land to that. Once the purpose is, because we're going to clear some of that land, because we have horses, and we're going to have a, you know, for our horses, basically. So, we're going to clear that land. But I guess I have to buy it first before I can attach it to Mrs. Kelly's property. So, but that's, that's the reason why. We're going to actually attach both properties together. And they'll have, we'll have a nice, we'll have a nice seven-acre lot. Not that we plan on building anything at all, but I think it'd be really something really nice. Like I said, we have horses and everything. And I know Mr. Cole is aware of our plans. And so, that's really what we want to do with the land. We just want to attach it to Emily Kelly's property. So, if we can get your permission to go ahead with that, and we could make that a condition or however you want to word it.
Well, you can't make a purchase before it's actually subdivided anyway. And we can't approve this lot as it is right now. So, it's going to have to be put off at least two weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
And I don't see any, I don't foresee any issues at all.
Okay.
We just need the plan to identify that it's being attached to another parcel.
Sure. Okay. I just wanted to let you know.
Excellent. Thank you. Love horse people.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, on the agenda for next meeting?
Okay. Yep. Thank you. And all we'll need from you is a Mylar.
Okay.
And if you send me a PDF of it, I can distribute it to the board digitally.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing, Stone Farm Subdivision's Surety. And since our clerk is not here, I will go ahead and read the announcement. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 26, 2019, beginning at 6:35 PM at the Lunenburg Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462, to discuss the application of subdivision surety to the completion of outstanding work under MGL Chapter 41, Section 81U and 81Y. The subdivision is located on the southerly side of Massachusetts Avenue, known as Stone Farm Estates. Parcel addresses are map 072, parcel 0040. Owner, Stone Farm Condominium Trust, 24 Riley Road, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. Applicant is Liscotti Development Corporation, 83 Orchard Hill Park Drive, Leominster, Mass. 01453. Materials are available for viewing at the Planning Board Office, 960 Mass. Ave., Lunenburg, Mass., 01462.
So, I was given this letter by one of the residents of Stone Farm at the beginning of the meeting and asked to pass it out. So, I think now's the appropriate time for that.
We have no applicant?
Uh, no. There's no representative from Liscotti that I'm aware of. So, some of you, I think you might be the only one, Matthew, who recalls last, or December of 2017, Liscotti came to the board and requested a reduction in their bond for the completion of the subdivision. At that time, the board had Graves Engineering go out and do a inspection to identify if there are any remaining and outstanding work to be done. Graves submitted a report, which is, the follow-up is in your material from December 20th, 2017. And it outlines the items that they found to be not completed. And the letter from Mr. Gurney also identifies the same items, along with a cost estimate of $20,000, $27,000, which is the subtotal plus a 20% contingency for inflation over time.
Do we have that estimate? I don't see it.
It's...
Oh, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet from us. And Liscotti indicated that, great, we're happy to do that work. We're going to do it this spring. That spring came, it didn't get done. At the time, the condominium trust was transferring from Liscotti to the property owners. The thought was that during those negotiations, Liscotti was holding out to try and negotiate further. He did not complete the work in the fall of 2018 either. So, you'll see there's a letter from myself to Liscotti in February of this year, or to John Scribner, who was the project manager at Liscotti, requesting the work be completed by the 1st of June. To date, the work has not been completed, and we have not received any response from The work to be completed is in the scope of the project, minor. In the world of those folks who live there, it's probably a little less minor. It's some maintenance ladders and manholes. There are some bottoms of manholes that need to be surfaced in a different material. There's a couple of cracked rings on manhole covers that need to be replaced. And there's some limited paving and signage that also need to be installed. So, at this time, since it's been about 18 months without any real action, the town, there's a bank holding the $27,000. The town, through this provision of Mass. general law, can claim that money, go through the process to hire a contractor to complete the work, and expend those funds to pay said contractor. Any remaining funds would be returned to Liscotti Development Corporation at the close of those repairs.
And Liscotti was informed of this hearing?
Yes, they were, by certified mail, returned and signed.
And I think you guys have the Graves review?
Mm-hmm.
I can't find it, but as I recall, he said that the $27,000 was more than adequate to complete the additional work.
My concern is that this is 2017. So, the following construction budget is based upon plans last revised November of '04, and it was estimated based on a site visit of 1117. There is a 20% inflation of 4,438. So, the hope is that will cover it. But we're a couple of years later, so my concern is, is that going to be sufficient for the work?
It's, it's what we have. And it's the best, the best that we can, we can go on. The reality being that if items were to be unable to be funded, it would be a conversation of what's most impactful and what could be not included. And now...
What's our recourse if there are things that were required by the permit? I guess we can cross that bridge if we get there. But, but my question really is, is if the $27,000 isn't sufficient, and there were requirements of the permit that are not being met, do we have any recourse after that?
I don't believe that we do. And because the board's not allowed to hold additional funds beyond what is reasonable for the work to be completed, this is something that many boards come up against. We're still within a reasonable timeframe of when this estimate was drawn up. I've seen boards go after bonds that were calculated decades in the past and have fallen significantly short. And this all reflects prevailing wage.
Right. Which is...
Which is, we would have to pay if we do the hiring. So, and, you know...
And if we take the bond, don't we take that responsibility?
Correct. We do. And now, the unit prices are based on the Mass. Highway weighted bid price. And that doesn't necessarily reflect the prices that we would get in a bid. It's just a standardized cost. I know that there are times when our local paving bids are significantly lower for, or higher, but for the cost of materials. So, it honestly could, six months later, have been not enough or way too much.
So, we have to go out to bid on this project?
We will.
So, we would put the project out to bid?
Correct.
And then, we would proceed for the work? So, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
Well, what we would do is, the board tonight, if they decided, or if you decided, that you were willing and wanted to take the bond, we would do that. We would notify Liscotti. They would have 45 days to complete the work. And then, at that time, we would pass it to town council. They would go after claiming the money. And once the money was claimed, then we would go through the RFP process, which is, for this dollar amount is a three written quotes. It's not a full-blown process because it's under $50,000. With the Municipal Modernization Act, they upped the levels of cost. So, $10,000 is best business practices, and up to $50,000 is three written quotes. So, it's not the onerous, oh, my goodness, I've got to write a whole bid spec package. I've got to put it out to bid. I've got to advertise it in the central register. We have 30 days. But the process from the 45-day mark of Liscotti either not doing the work or notifying us, I'm not going to do the work, go ahead and take it, to town council having the ability to garner those funds from the financial institution could be 10 days. It could be six to 24 months. So, it's, that's where the, and that's why it's taken this long to get to the board with the hope that for the little amount of money that it would cost them to do it, they would just go and spend the day and do the stuff and get probably more than half of this back into their pocket. But I think that they've decided they have bigger, more important projects that garner them more than $14,000 or $15,000.
Well, you know, I understand that, but they have a responsibility to complete the project.
Oh, I understand that. And that's why we're at the point where it's time to explore the claiming of the funds.
I would make a motion that we claim the funds located in the surety bond in the amount of $27,000.
It is a public hearing, I think. Great?
Okay.
It is. That's right. I have a couple of questions, actually.
Okay.
So, do we have any different ability to enforce the order of conditions before we take the bond than after? Can we, can we try to use some enforcement to get them to finish their job rather than taking the money? It's not going to do us any favors.
We haven't done any enforcement?
Well, we've communicated with, the enforcement would be...
Please finish.
Yeah, that's essentially what, I mean, the building inspector could write a letter that says, hey, your project doesn't conform to the special permit. And the people who are then subject to that and fall victim to it are sitting here in front of you and live there because they're now the property owners. And they've inherited the special permit and the conditions and otherwise. Whereas, we have this bond from Liscotti.
And he did that. I mean, that was done, well, you did that. You did that in February of 2018.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. My second question is, can we somehow, can, can we manage to reimburse the condominium association for their installation of a 20 mile an hour speed limit sign? As in...
I would have to, I would have to work with town council to see if, if the work that they did on that would qualify as reimbursable.
Okay.
The planning board doesn't issue a certificate of completion or anything once a special permit is issued?
Certificate of compliance.
Or, do we issue a certificate of compliance?
Not generally with a special permit. Because special permits you issue, and they're issued under the zoning bylaw. So, the enforcement comes through the building inspector, and that's usually wrapped up as part of the final certificate of occupancy. An example, and the same would be true for site plan approval. An example would be Proctor's Supply over on Electric Ave. They have final occupancy for their building. They have not completed their top coat, their curbing, and their landscaping due to the timing of when they were finishing the building. It wasn't appropriate time to be planting, and there is construction happening next door. So, their occupancy permit notes when it needs to be completed by. And at that point, the building inspector could hold the occupancy permit over them. In this instance, it's a longer-term project, and because it was under subdivision control, you have this bond, which is sort of giving the bond back as the certificate of compliance, that they've done everything correctly, and you give it back. And we'll see this again. Butterfly Lane will be coming before the board in the near future, looking to wrap up their subdivision. And they'll be getting, they'll be asking for their, their bond back. And we'll be doing a final inspection. You'll be given a report from Graves on, we reviewed the road, here's the final items to be completed. You can reduce the bond down to the cost of that. They'll go and complete those. And where they're having the road accepted by the town, there's a second layer with the selectmen, the layout hearing and town meeting.
Not to accept the road.
But this falls in that same sphere because it was permitted as a subdivision.
Are we going to incur any legal costs when town council goes to attach, to obtain the surety?
We should not because it should be covered under the annual pricing.
Okay. So, this doesn't go outside the annual pricing?
It, well, it theoretically could go to court, but that's another, that would be the next step, and we would address that one when the time came. And those additional costs would be filing costs or affidavit costs or any of those type of things, should they be required.
Is there any public comment? Please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bernie. I gave Adam, Mr. Bernie, a handout earlier that essentially summarizes...
Sorry to interrupt you, but I assume that you're Donald Gurney.
I apologize. Okay. My name is Donald Gurney. I live at 37 Riley Road.
Thank you.
I'm a member of the Board of Trustees and the president of the Stone Farm Estates Condominium Trust. There was a meeting of the Planning Board in January of 2018 that I unfortunately was able, unable to attend. And at that meeting, an application from Liscotti Development was considered to reduce the bond that the town was holding from $967,000 to $27,000, a reduction of $940,000. At that time, the Planning Board had in hand the report from Graves Engineering that was dated December 4, 2017, which set forth the, really, seven categories of work that needed to be either completed or done in the first instance. And I set those forth. Some of them were, or a lot of them were really asphalt-related, paving a sidewalk from the mailboxes down to 360 feet below the mailboxes, fixing two manhole cover areas where the manholes were, well, the engineers said they protruded, so the snowplows were hitting them. So, the asphalt needed to be fixed around those. Another major area was, we have an emergency access road that connects Riley Road westward to Sunny Hill Road. And that road has been paved, the top coat has been put on, but there's a big gap between the level of the asphalt and the sides. And so, the engineering firm said that the sides needed to be filled in to match the level of the pavement. The, the two signs, I don't think I feel strongly about. When I said that the condominium installed one of the signs, it was really Lou Delasata bought a sign from Amazon and put it up. I'm not sure why we really need a keep right sign, but I guess it's on the master plan. And then, we have five manholes, and the engineering firm said that we needed ladders and inverters, whatever those are. So, those are beyond my level of knowledge. But, you know, they're, I set forth, and I pretty much copied those from the Graves Engineering report. So, there are seven different things that they, that Graves Engineering identified. You know, I think the people in the condominium and the Board of Trustees are, have a substantial concern that the $27,000 was not, was not, and is not adequate. But it's, you know, we just don't have a control over it. At the January 2018 meeting, which I missed, one of the members of the Board of Trustees, Elaine Moreau, inquired as to the incentive for the developer to complete the work if only $27,000 is being withheld. And nevertheless, she was insured that it was probably going to cost about $15,000 to do the work. But that was January of 2018. I waited anxiously for the asphalt plants to open in the spring of 2018. Nothing happened. And they've opened again in 2019. Nothing has happened. It's 19 months later. You know, in, I, I have absolutely no idea why Liscotti Development has chosen not to move forward. And I can only speculate. There's no, nothing to be gained by speculating. But I think the, the Planning Board and the town, I would appreciate their proceeding to endeavor to get the seven items of work completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other further public comment? Okay. So, I guess that's the options, right? We try to get the bond, and then we put out the bid. Are there any other options?
Not that I'm aware of. That's the procedure for what we have and what we're...
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
I would like to make a motion that we move forward with taking the $27,000 surety bond for Stone Pharma Estates in order to complete the work necessary to bring the subdivision into compliance with the plans.
Second.
Any further discussion?
If you would add a date of October 14th to claim the bond, that would give him... That would give LaScotti Development Corporation the remaining 45 days.
And that's required? We have to give him the 45 days? Because I don't want to, to be perfectly honest with you.
In the scheme of the timing, it is required that they have time to complete the work, that the work be completed by October 14th, or the town will claim the bond.
We have to give him the 45 days?
Yes.
We can't reduce that, even though we notified him in February of 18?
I'm almost positive that when the board takes action, they have to give him 45 days.
Okay. I would amend my motion to say we will claim the bond... Move forward to claim the bond on October 14th in the event that the work is not completed by that date.
I amend. I second the amendment.
Any further discussion? And I think it is advisable to avoid the potential litigation at all costs, just by following the letter of...
Yeah, if that is the law, then we have to follow it. My question is, is it the 45 days? Is it 30 days? You know, but if it's 45, it's 45.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I just think this is a learning lesson for the planning board, is that when we reduce bonds, we need to be very careful to ensure that we keep enough, and that... I know that we did at the time, but it's two years, 19 months later, and hopefully it's enough.
But my understanding is we can't keep more than a reasonable amount.
You can't keep more than a verifiable engineering estimate with a reasonable contingency. So, you can't say, "We're going to keep an 80% contingency."
But I just wonder if, since we're a year and a half later, if 20% now is enough. I mean, as we talked about, asphalt prices fluctuate depending on product.
Although, in reality, we could... We need to look at our rules and regs. We could add some sort of escalator clause.
That would be great.
In the way that we do our bond, we don't have that now. So, even Butterfly Lane, as an example, again, one of the only subdivisions we have outstanding, they have a bond that was set almost five years ago.
So, is there a way to do an escalator clause?
There is. I have to look at what the language says.
That would be perfect, because then it will keep up with inflation.
The other thing that we can do is start putting time limits on subdivisions. You need to be completed in two years. And if they come back and say, "Look, we're 60% complete. We need a two-year extension," then you say, "All right. Well, now, let's look at the bond and make sure that we're still..." And it gets into a negotiation thing. With all the bylaw work we've been doing, I've kind of put the rules and regs for subdivision control over here, but it seems that they're coming more and more to the fore.
Well, and there's another one coming up, yeah.
And with some of the stormwater stuff coming forward, we're going to have to do work on that. So, maybe this winter would be a good time to drop something new on the board to look at for that.
Yeah, I definitely think we need to look at it, especially with all the subdivisions that are coming. You know, you mentioned Butterfly Lane. We have another... Many others that were permitted. I think we need to make sure this situation doesn't happen again.
All right. So, everybody that was here for that public hearing, if you sign the sign-in sheet, then you'll be notified of future agenda items pertaining to this. So, we are done with that public hearing. We have a few more things. Was there anybody here specifically for economic development for the solar bylaw discussion? If not, I'll just take them in order. But if there was someone here for...
I think we're all set.
I wasn't kicking you out. So, we'll move on. Economic development. Discussing developing a committee.
Has Greg had a chance to see this?
This?
Yeah.
No, I didn't get to it until this afternoon.
So, I want to preface this by saying, I think I personally would like to have all the members here and be able to have an opportunity to review it before we act on it.
I'm fine.
If we want to discuss it in general and make our own comments. But I would be uncomfortable voting without Greg being unable to have an opportunity to see it.
And I did notice that it says town management. It says, "The planning board" in the first line.
And ratified by the Board of Selectmen, frankly, I'm concerned about.
And that also, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm more... I'm not liking that.
You're not liking them ratifying or the appointment by the town manager?
I'm not liking either of those, frankly.
Okay.
I think if the planning board's going to establish an economic development, I think that it should be ratified by them.
Oh, yeah. I didn't get into that because I figured you would have... You all would have your own desire on how you wanted to appoint them.
So, you know, I think that's something we have to talk about. And I'm happy to talk about it, but I just want to be clear. I would prefer not to vote on it until Greg has an opportunity to chime in.
That's up to you, folks. I told you I'd have it for tonight, so I wanted to make sure I had it for tonight.
I know he had, you know... He had some concerns about the last one, and he wanted to review it. And so, I just would prefer to wait, but...
And, you know, appointed... And it could just be appointed by the planning board as follows.
That's what I would prefer, to be perfectly honest with you.
Which makes the most sense, unless you want me to appoint them and you want to ratify them to streamline it.
I think that the planning board is...
No, if the planning board appoints them, then we get to interview them.
It makes... Yes, it makes the most sense.
Well, and I think that kind of picks up on something we discussed when we reviewed the charter, which was... When the charter was changed at this year's town meeting, some of the appointments ended up with the town manager, and there was a lot of discussion about that because, in a lot of ways, you are centralizing the control of the committees in one person. So, I'm in favor of having the planning board appoint it, as Paula said, so.
So, I'll make those two changes for...
Well, it's actually three. So, the Section 1, where it says, "Is being formed by the planning board."
By the planning board.
And then, the second sentence, I would change to, "And advise the residents of Lunenburg, the planning board, other town boards and departments."
Okay. And then, I'll just change town manager and ratified to a planning board. And I don't know if it's worth it to wait until you have Greg to have a discussion about what the membership looks like, because the three of you could agree, and he could have a completely different view that changes some of you, but...
I agree with that, too, yeah.
I just think it... I think it makes sense to wait till we're all here.
That's what I'm saying. I think with the... So, I'll make those planning board changes and send it out in the morning.
Yeah, and I agree, we should wait till Greg gets here. But in terms of the composition of the committee, I have a little bit of a concern with having, like, on the ag com end of thing, that owns a business in Lunenburg. And same with the residents, you know, the at-large members. Obviously, it's preferential if you have that person.
You paint yourself into a corner. You limit your candidate pool by...
You just don't have the applicants, you know.
You can say preferably, but you can't say "and is."
Yeah. Well, and I think maybe what we do is decide who you want to be on it. If there's members of committees that you want, if you want more people from at-large, and then, maybe we add a clause at the end that says something to the effect of residents who own businesses in Lunenburg may be given preference, or, you know, people with... Here's an ideal candidate sort of structure, and do something like that.
I think that's good, because I think, as Chandler just said, our applicants are limited. So, I think to paint ourselves in a corner isn't wise.
And the other thing I'll throw out there for you guys to chew on over the next two weeks is, do you want to open it up to having ex officio members who are non-residents but own businesses? Is that something that would be beneficial? Or is that something that the Economic Development Committee might look at, forming a business roundtable where resident and non-resident businesses come together quarterly to talk about issues on the economic development front? Approval issues they've run up against? Something they're seeing that we might not be aware of on a municipal level that would facilitate assisting them in being more successful, that kind of thing? So, I don't want any sort of answer now, just something that I think is worth considering because, you know, all of the businesses contribute to our economic development, and only having residents participate in a measurable way may negate some gains that we could have. And maybe it doesn't. Maybe I'm overanalyzing it.
Along those lines, I think you could get the benefit of that just by cooperating with the Lunenburg Business Association, which allows...
Yeah, which we do.
...with them.
Yeah.
And that way, it keeps the committee composition pretty clean. The only other thought that crossed my mind, just for a discussion point on this, is, again, going back to the charter review process, one of the issues that we discussed at length was, does a member of a committee need to be a registered voter? In this case, I don't think it makes much difference either way, but I figured I should bring it up. Because a resident versus registered voter is... There's a distinction there.
I guess I never even thought about it.
I would think that this is less necessary.
Certainly. It became an issue on the Finance Committee because the Finance Committee votes to make on recommendations at town meeting. And if you're at town meeting, you have to be a registered voter. So, it basically mitigates the person's ability to make a recommendation. And they also have some nuances where they can move some funds around, and you need to be a registered voter in order to take that action. So, in their situation, if you were just barely making quorum, and then you had somebody that technically can't vote, you're unable to do business. Here, I don't think it's really an issue, but I wanted to bring it up. The only other thing that came up as part of that discussion is, a registered voter needs to be 18 years of age. And so, you put an age restraint on this. But theoretically, you could have a resident that's 17 years old and runs a business in town and could join the committee. And I'd be all over appointing them if they were 17 years old and wanted to join the committee.
All right. So, we have decided to hold off until Greg is present with us. We've got September 9th. 22nd of the 23rd? Oh, the 24th. That's been moved, so we...
Well, that's still up in the air.
Okay. So, we still are having a meeting on the 23rd, correct?
Yeah, that's your normal meeting night.
So, then, we'll put that up? We'll put this off till then?
Yeah.
And if the 24th...
Wait, wait, hold on. Why not do it on the 9th? In two weeks.
Two... Okay. I mean, I...
I'm asking, not insisting, I just...
No, it's good to ask.
Because...
Has anybody got any input?
No, I think we've kind of got it dialed in, and we get Greg's input, and should be able to get moving.
And I think we've spent some time talking about earth removal as well, so that shouldn't...
Yeah, and I should have... I have Paula's comments, and I don't have any comments from the other members. So, the sooner I can get those, the more dialed in that can be. And I did speak to Jim Giriffi today. He's back from his sojourn in the Southwest. And he said, his initial thought was estimated high groundwater, but I'm going to send him the document to look over and...
Estimated high groundwater using...
Modeling.
Modeling, that's what I thought.
But I'm going to send him the document and get some comments from him.
That's kind of what I thought he would say, but that's why I wanted to check.
And he said, especially in sand pits and stuff, you want to have, you know, more than just the bare minimum. Because in sand, you need a greater separation between high groundwater and...
It perks so fast, yeah.
But that's the weeds, and that's for another day.
All right. So, do we want to put it on the 9th, then?
What, the economic development? Yeah, I think so. I think if you can send it out to everybody...
Yeah, I can do... Yeah, I'll do the first thing tomorrow.
Yeah.
I was out last week, so I didn't have any...
All right. Now, the solar bylaw discussion. I know Greg feels very strongly about that as well.
Well, that's what I was going to say. And I think he's got a little more input on it in terms of previous issues.
Can I just get, by way of background, what is the objectives of the planning board with the solar bylaw? I'm trying to understand.
Quite frankly, I'm not sure. I mean, the objectives are to issue the special permits as it is. The bylaw was written, as I understand it, by citizen petition through town meeting.
Okay.
In response to a bylaw that was declared illegal due to some provisions within it.
Wait a minute. What's illegal? Our old bylaw or this...
No, no. The bylaw that existed prior to the one that we currently have.
Okay, so this new one...
So, this was put on and approved by citizen petition.
Okay.
At town meeting.
Okay.
It has the 200-foot buffer. It allows for ground-mounted systems up to 10 KW.
Yeah.
Most homes need a system larger than 10 KW.
Okay.
So, they get bumped into the large ground-mounted category. And you need a minimum of 20 acres to install a large ground mount. So, there's no real allowance for someone who needs a larger system to run a home or something like that. It just kicks everybody into large.
Okay.
The way that the buffer regulations are written in this bylaw, it's very squishy. And says, I don't know the exact wording, but it essentially says, "You have to have 200 feet unless you talk to the planning board, and they say you don't." And over time, and constantly, people come in and say, "Well, I know it says 200 feet, but I'm doing this other thing, and I want to reduce it to 20 feet." Or, "I want to reduce it to 150 feet." And I think my buffer is equal. And it becomes a push and pull between the planning board and the applicant on whether their buffer is adequate, whether the planning board is being reasonable. So, I think some of that comes into it. There historically has been some concern that the location of solar farms, not an individual's solar array to run a home, but, you know, megawatt scale and larger solar farms in residential areas is an industrial use within a residential area, ruins the quiet and bucolic life, ruins the view sheds, and subjects the residents of those areas to undue stress and pressure. And so, there's been some feeling that the... Where you can allow solar fields as a primary use should be restricted to commercial industrial, and that residential, it should be restricted to an accessory use only. There's been some discussion or some thought about harder, firmer, more defined buffer zones, including what constitutes that buffer zone as far as height, thickness, et cetera, of plant material. I have had discussions in the past with members about the potential to look at footprint instead of KW for field size. Because as technology increases, a 1-megawatt field... Because as technology increases, a, a 1-megawatt field, um, five years ago was five to six acres. And now, depending on the panel, you can get it down to three acres. So, if, you know, the, if you're using current technology and you're putting a, a 5KW system in, you could have a smaller footprint than somebody who a few years ago put a system that was smaller than that in. And what it does is it gives you a, excuse me, a more balance to the parcel and, and the area than, "We need a minimum of 20 acres and you have to have this big halo." And, uh, if you do a footprint and you say, "Here's what your setbacks are," you, you have an easier time scaling through, through the different districts. But that's just, that's my, my thoughts on it. It really, the major issues, as I've seen them, is the, the lack of definitive information on the buffer zone, the primary use solar in residential areas, and the, uh, the lack of ability of homeowners to place ground-mounted systems that would power their home only or with some moderate buffer.
And this was approved by the Attorney General?
This one was, yes.
This one was, okay.
And this has been in place-
Since May of 2018.
Since when?
May of 2018, it says.
No, that was when we amended the, we, we just changed the numbers at that time.
Okay.
So it was, I believe this goes back to 2012 or 2013, I think.
Okay.
In terms of the size limitation, I believe that 10KW number is a number you run into with Unitil as well. If you have a system that is over 10KW, you are then considered a commercial producer if you're net metering. You can go above it if you're completely off the grid. So, I don't know if changing that in our bylaw is going to help anybody. I mean, we, we could change it to 15, but I think what they're going to run into is when they go to interconnect and net meter, Unitil's going to say you can't be over 10KW. Because I ran into that myself with the solar that I put on-
It's a home?
Uh, we actually put it on our garage and same thing. And we could have improved the connection into the building, gone to three-phase, and then we would have gained some capacity there.
Oh, so that, the issue is that you need the three-phase to go over the 10KW, but at a, at a single phase, you can do up to 10?
Yeah. And it- The way I understand it, I'm not an electrician or an electrical engineer, but that's just from my limited discussion I had when we were doing our own project, we ran into that. We actually had to disconnect one of our panels because Unitil's electrical engineer thought that we were going to be a few percent more efficient than the installer thought. And so we had to disconnect a panel in order to meet the reg.
Question is though, if, if we were to raise the cap for a homeowner and they lived on a road where there were three-phase power and they chose to upgrade, would that impact or, and I guess my, my feeling is, I would rather have the tools out there and let somebody else run into a roadblock that, that's not caused by us and say, "Oh, sorry." But, I mean, that, that's good information to have and it's, it's worth maybe noting somewhere. My, my feeling is that some people are going to want to do it, regardless of, of what they have to do.
I'm in favor of increasing it to, say, 15KW. Because, I mean, my system's 10 and I've got 42 panels. I don't think it's unreasonable for somebody to have 60 solar panels if they've got the room and want to do it and, and then-
We would need 52, I think, on our house.
Or something. It also, if you're net metering, it also, um, you also have to prove to Unitil that you have the demand for the panels.
Correct. So then, and again, I think that goes back to some sort of built-in, yeah.
In terms of the 200-foot buffer, I mean, I, I know that has been a point of discussion and sometimes contention. But I don't know that there's a better way of doing it than we've done it. You know, some of the applicants have been very cooperative and have offered to replace trees, increase buffering. Others applicants haven't been as cooperative. But unfortunately, I think that's just part of the process. Because if you, if you increased the size of the buffer, and again, I'd use this example of the hayfield. You put a solar field in the middle of a hayfield and you say, "Oh, well, now I want 300 feet of buffer." Doesn't make much difference if you have a wide-open field, um, or a body of water and topography plays a big-
And my, my take is not increase, I honestly would look at maybe decreasing with a, an accounting of, you need this much plant material within that 100 feet and you need to provide, you know, this much cover and it needs to look like this and have it hard and fast and say, "Okay, we can talk about a reduction in that buffer of X percent with an increase of plant material of X percent." And, because like you said, right now, it, it says native vegetation. So if you're in a hayfield, the native vegetation is hay. So, rather than that, say, every 100 feet, you need to have plant materials, you know, equal to this amount, spread equally throughout of these different categories to provide. And, and I've seen this done where they say you, for, for every 100 feet, you have to have 12 evergreen trees, a minimum of eight feet at planting, um, you know, seven shade trees that are three-and-a-half caliper at planting, uh, a number of bushes and, and spread out through that 100 feet. And what you do is you create that multi-height, multi-dimensional-
Cover.
Cover of, of plant material that will, and we're never, other than building a solid wall that's 12 feet tall, we're never going to block all view of this, but the idea is to-
But it's clearly defined how-
Is to soften it and clearly define how and what you're buffering and, and what you're buffering with. And so I would, I would encourage the board to move in the direction of prescriptive-
Do you, can you send us an example of that, of a town that does that?
I haven't seen it done specifically for solar, I've seen it done in landscaping bylaws.
If, if you can find something like that, I think that would be really helpful. So again, I think we should table further discussion on this till Greg's here.
I agree.
I agree. And that would be the, the 2-3. Because you, um-
We have earth removal and economic development tonight.
Yeah, you've talked about flopping bylaws and back and forth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you have a question? Do you just love watching us?
No, sorry. So, it's about the A&R.
I assumed it was.
Yeah, sorry. The, our attorney has told us that the, being, uh, the conveyance doesn't need to be on the plan for it to be signed, um, because we, they need it for, uh, to be recorded. So, we don't know 100% sure who's, we're 100% sure who's going to be, who it's going to be conveyed to. We haven't had an agreement as to exactly who's buying it.
Because you don't have a PNS, because you don't have a parcel, so you can't write a PNS.
Correct.
But we don't need the conveyance to be on there, we just need it re-labeled parcel.
But isn't it, so it's a, because it says proposed lot?
Right, because we can't make an unconforming lot on a plan, which is what we would be doing. We'd be making a landlocked lot and we can't do that.
Okay, uh, it, so that's the only difference, just because it doesn't say parcel.
Yeah, let me give you a call tomorrow and, and we can, we can figure out exactly what to put on there that'll satisfy everything.
But I, I'm getting the feeling that there's a state of urgency or something about this.
Yes.
How urgent?
Urgent where I had to come back.
So, so more than 14, less than 14 days urgent?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm going to defer to the board on that.
But what exactly does our bylaw say about creating-
Our bylaw doesn't say anything. It's, it's state law. It's state law, you generally don't create-
Anything less than 50 foot.
A, well, no, you have to have some frontage.
Right. But even, the attorney said that as long as it says it's not going to be a buildable lot, then it's okay.
It, that's true. The not buildable will cover that, the lack of frontage.
Correct.
Generally, we like to see it to say combined with, because it, it easily defines everything that you're not going to create. A parcel that you're identifying as non-buildable that you stop paying taxes on, we end up having to take.
Yeah.
But it, it is, it is actionable, it's not the cleanest.
Well, and then the other half of the discussion is, what about the setback?
Well, I did check the setback, we're well over 200 feet over that. Based on the plans that were approved by the planning board.
Well, here's the easy way to do that.
I did check the planning board plans.
It just would be good to have that reflected on this plan. That's all, but.
Uh, the panel is 215 feet from the corner with the drill hole in it-
Okay.
Across the easement.
So, less than 50-
And that's the closest panels-
That's the closest panel.
That's the closest panels to the edge of the easement.
Well, less than 200.
The easement's 50, 150 wide, so.
Which is part of that.
The panel is, see, this is the drill hole at the turn and it's 215 feet from there.
And that's the closest one.
And that's the panel that's closest to the new property line. Because the property line comes from here and extends that way at the, at the angle.
Back to the A&R law, I'm very concerned because we had a situation on Sunset Lane that you guys will recall that talked about the requirement for access to a public way for an A&R. And looking at the sub-control subdivision control law and the guide put out by mass.gov, it talks about the adequacy of a public way. So by putting non-buildable on that, that takes care of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Because they're, they're saying it's not buildable, you're, you, you don't have practicable access because there's zero frontage.
And we, it's not going to be built on.
We're just going through 3.25, 3.22. Is that what you're doing? I don't see any, any requirements in our bylaw.
So just looking at it and looking at prior court cases, it talks about the need for stating that it's being combined with another lot because you're not creating a non-conforming lot. My understanding of the A&R process was you couldn't do an A&R to create a non-conforming lot. And that's what we're doing by creating a lot that doesn't have frontage. If that lot states on the plan that it should be combined with another lot, then we're not creating a non-conforming-
As long as it says it's not a buildable lot, it covers that, that's-
I don't think it does.
Conforming lots can still be non-buildable. That, and that's getting back to the point where I was making about the L-shaped lot.
My understanding was that you couldn't make a, a lot more-
You can't make a lot more non-conforming.
So by, by cutting off the frontage, you're making it more non-conforming?
But they're not removing the frontage here.
This has no frontage.
Well, the, the lot that they're creating does, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The other one.
It, but it doesn't have frontage right now. That corner of the lot has no frontage out to Fitch View.
But isn't it one lot right now?
Yes.
So it has frontage through the other lot, right now it's one-
Yeah, it does.
I need to just do a plan then, because-
It has frontage on Electric Ave, it does not have frontage on Fitch View Ave. So they're just cutting off a back part of the lot.
Right, but right now it's one lot. So right now, the frontage for that back parcel is through Electric Ave, through this parcel, because it's one parcel. So they're creating two parcels, so they're creating one parcel that now doesn't have frontage. So they're making a lot that conforms by frontage to non-conforming, because now it doesn't have frontage.
No, because what remains is still conforming, it still has frontage on the lot. And you've removed six acres, but you've still got the remaining 25.
I understand that, but you're creating a non-conforming lot.
You are, but in, I don't like the language either, but I know, we just did an A&R on Oak Ave where two neighbors swapped parcels. They were swapping like 10,000 square feet or something back and forth and neither, neither change made either lot non-conforming, they were just swapping like front yard for backyard.
But this does. This makes that back lot non-conforming.
But we don't know who it's going to be conveyed to, so when we create it, we still don't know.
My point with the Oak Ave example is-
Who was the fellow that stood up to speak and said?
Yes, but he's not technically the owner.
Yeah.
He said he's going to buy it, but we don't have an agreement with them yet. And he's not technically the homeowner that owns that parcel, so-
You can't have an agreement until it is a separate parcel, right?
Correct.
Exactly.
What he's saying is I can't write a PNS for something that doesn't have meets and bounds.
Sure they can, you can do a PNS.
Well, if both pieces are going to be conveyed to the same person, then just take that lot line off and leave the frontage to the back parcel.
No, no, so the back parcel is going to be conveyed to a different person. But we don't know who the actual person is going to be.
Oh, that's all going to work out, yeah.
Yeah. So once we create the lot, then we can move forward from there.
The reason I brought up the Oak Ave discussion was tho, those small pieces were not buildable pieces. And that was my point, was how do we deal with a situation like this where you have a piece on Oak Ave, they weren't buildable because it was like 8,000 square feet.
But it said on that plan that they were adding it to another parcel. You, you knew it was a land transfer, so it was, so that's what would, that to me is what's muddying this. Because we could be creating this back lot and it never gets conveyed. So we're creating a landlocked piece that's not a buildable lot, but it doesn't say who it's being combined, hold on, it doesn't say who it's being combined to. And we see that a lot where it has little value because it doesn't combine and then the town ends up with it because nothing happens with it.
We'll still own it, because we still own the land that the solar field is on and we would still own all of that.
Mrs. Bertram's point is that once you take this piece off, you could technically, it'll have a separate tax card and everything. You could stop paying taxes on it and it's junk land and then the town ends up with it.
And I, and I totally understand, but-
And so we're, we're trying to work with you, we're just trying to figure out how this all plays out. Now can, we can't condition an A&R now.
Is, is it adequate to write a note 8 in, in Sharpie saying that proposed lot 6?
No. Because you're altering a stamped PLS plan.
That's true, yeah.
You're not the one who stamped it, are you? It's a plan stamped by a professional land surveyor. You can't alter someone else's stamped plan, it's very, very not good.
Against the law.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, even sometimes when you see people who come in with like a photocopied plan that they've drawn over- I mean, even sometimes when you see people who come in with like a photocopied plan that they've drawn over, if the stamp is still on it, that's really still kind of hinky.
I'm not comfortable with it myself.
So how would we address that? Because we don't know who it's going to be conveyed to since we don't have the lot that's created.
Well, I think the fix is, I understand it, is to remove the language that says not a buildable lot and replace it with, you know, parcel A to be conveyed to.
But under.
So-and-so, even if you don't have a P and S.
There's no reason that you guys can't come to an agreement with a P and S contingent. But to ask us to create a non-conforming lot, you're telling us it's going to be conveyed. And I have no reason to not believe that. But we're signing a plan that doesn't indicate that this lot is going to make a parcel that's more conforming because that's essentially what we'd be doing if it's combined to one of these other lots. But without that language on the plan, we're allowing you to create a non-conforming lot.
And technically, I think the way this needs to happen is it needs to have language saying that to be conveyed to Emily Kelly of whatever, Fitchview.
Right. Or to be conveyed to map 74 lot, whatever, or to become part of.
Owner of record.
Yeah.
Or possibly even combined with adjacent parcel. I mean, would it have to be specified?
No, because then we don't know. I think you have to identify what you're adding it to.
Well, because theoretically, it could be the other owner, Ralph Target on Electric Ave or whoever.
Noel, whatever, or Jack and Ian or.
I'm really sorry.
And we don't have any meetings.
A and Rs have to be approved in an open meeting.
Mm-hmm. Unless you have, unless the board grants authority to an individual to sign them.
So then we can just grant authority to me and when they come back with the revised plan, hopefully less than 14 days. I assume you guys are motivated up to.
I have no problem with allowing you to sign.
Or the board can say, we will endorse it if the plan's corrected in this way. And then you can just come and sign when you have the amended plan.
Well, but we can just have one person sign.
Isn't that approving it conditionally? You just told us we couldn't.
No, no. Well, no, because you're saying, we approve the A and R. You can't condition the A and R. You can't say, we're going to sign this if you do these things. You're saying, we'll approve a plan that shows this. And you've approved it. And then when he presents the plan, you just come in and sign it because it's the plan you've approved.
So it's not.
It's not a conditional, yes. It's not a conditional approval. It's not.
Still a condition.
Well.
Yeah, I think it's a conditional approval. I think that we'd be better off to grant authority to the chairman to sign the plan.
Okay. But you need three signatures on the A and R.
You need three signatures on it.
Because you haven't designated. You would have to designate on your registry signatory page that we do every June that it only takes one name, one signature to endorse it.
And I don't think we want to do that.
Well, you.
We could.
Could do that. And then when we have A and Rs, only the chair has to share. Only the chair has to sign it.
I don't think we should do that.
No. I mean, with that O'Brien Homes.
All right, so basically, I mean, you could contact two other members or you could contact all the other members when you have the revised bylaw in the office.
Mm-hmm.
So if I got the plan to you tomorrow?
But again, we need to have an open meeting, correct?
We can approve it, well, conditionally, apparently. I don't.
No.
Well, that's not approved because it's not, it's not a condition. I guess it is a condition.
A and R.
Yeah, that's kind of a condition.
Because, I mean, approval not required, so how?
I know. Up until recently, I never thought you had to take a vote for an A and R. We've got advice from current council that says that because it's the board acting and endorsing, they should be taking.
But if it's an approval not required, you don't actually.
But we can't go against what our council recommends.
I understand your frustration. I understand where you're at.
I understand.
Does a week from today work? September 2nd? No, that doesn't because that's Labor Day.
That's Labor Day.
What about Thursday at 5:00?
This Thursday?
Yeah. I can walk into the office tomorrow and post a meeting. You guys could come over to the Ritter. You don't have to come here. It doesn't need to be on TV.
I couldn't do 5:00, but I could do 6:00.
Pumpkin hour is at 6:00?
No, I can do 6:00.
Okay. 6:00 works way better for me.
I don't know if I can do 6:00. I mean, how long?
We're trying to work with you.
I understand.
Lives really five minutes.
Because my son is here from South Carolina, and we have a dinner that night.
It would be open. We wouldn't put anything other than the A and R on it.
Yeah.
All right. If it's that quick, but I'm telling you right now, I have to run in and sign and run out because I've got family here.
Yeah. And I thank, you know, thank you for working with me. So I just want to make sure I understand. The note needs to, it needs to be changed to.
Parcel A.
Parcel A. And then take away.
Parcel A to be conveyed to, and you have to identify it.
You could even say intended to be conveyed to.
Really?
No.
No.
But to be conveyed to and abutting parcel.
Oh, to and abutting parcel?
My line would work.
I don't think so.
To be, shall be. How about shall be?
Shall be makes me feel more comfortable.
Shall be conveyed to.
Yeah. What his concern is, is that, say, he goes to, and please correct me if I'm wrong. He sits down with the proposed purchaser.
And we don't.
And says, I want this much money, and she says, you're crazy. And they never find an agreeable price.
Well, that should be happening now. I'm sorry. Quite frankly, that should be happening now. And a P and S can be contingent upon the endorsement of the planning board. I don't think that's our problem.
Yeah.
I don't think the fact that you guys haven't negotiated a deal is our problem.
I agree. You can show the buyer the plan.
That's not our issue. I mean, there's no reason, and believe me, I've done a couple purchases and sales when I was selling my dad's properties. You can absolutely do it contingent.
And I totally understand. I've done many A and Rs and never have I had a planning board tell me that it had to be conveyed to somebody when you're creating a lot.
The issue is, right now, this lot has 122 feet of frontage. By putting that line between the proposed lot of six acres and the proposed lot of 1.7, you're basically making this a landlocked parcel.
Yes.
We can't allow you to do that.
But under A and R law, you can as long as it says not to be a buildable lot. It's under chapter 41A, or 41 for the A and Rs.
Do you know what section?
I can call my attorney. I don't know.
I don't know. It's in the 81s. Because that's where all the planning board stuff is.
Well, 81X is no new law.
No, that's no new law.
No, 81X is basically you draw a line around the eight parcels you own to make them one parcel.
One build lot, yeah.
And you write a new deed. Approval plan's not subject to subdivision, 81P.
Yeah, that's not it.
What's not it?
I don't see where it talks in detail about that. It just talks about the need to sign, but it doesn't go into.
Shall forthwith let out, endorse, cause to be there in person, authorized, approval under subdivision control. Closest of all persons shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision.
Yeah, but if you go further to the A and R handbook that the state puts out, it talks about road access.
I guess my question is, if we do create the A and R, once it's, and it says to be conveyed to this lot and it, or shall be conveyed to this, you know, certain lot, and it doesn't happen, then we created a A and R with a non-buildable lot that, I mean.
You're saying it's the same either way.
Yeah. But we still own it.
Where does the not creating a non-conforming lot come into play? Because I'm not seeing this.
It doesn't say you can't create a non-conforming lot. It says you can't make an existing non-conforming lot more non-conforming. So if you had a half acre and.
I get what that says. I get that.
So then if you can create a non-conforming lot, then.
Because the A and R endorsement doesn't constitute buildability or suitability for conformance with zoning bylaws. And they do have that statement on their plan.
Well, in this handbook that the state developed, it talks about vital access. I'm looking at the A and R handbook.
Correct.
And by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And that talks about adequacy of a way, adequacy of a public way, adequacy of access. Endorsing A and R plans showing zoning violations, which is what this would do. Page 45.
No, because it's not a zoning violation to not have, because there's no building on it. So a zoning violation would be creating a lot line that's closer than the required setback or.
So we've concurred, we've agreed that you can have a P and S conditional upon subdivision of the property. We agreed upon that?
I don't see any reason why not. Okay.
So.
Sorry, we've agreed on what?
Is there a reason that you can't do a P and S conditional upon a future signing of this A and R?
Well, I understand where you're coming and.
This is.
I guess I just, I still want to understand the language because what happens.
Follow up with the language. But, I mean, this, I don't know. It seems we're not sure. Our land use director's not sure. We have no town council. We have the word from your council. I'm not sure. I have pretty clear understanding of purchase and sales agreements as well, and they can be conditional. So I don't understand, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to be pressed like this.
And I'm not trying to press. I'm just trying to understand.
I understand you're not.
The language on the plan, what it's supposed to say. That's what I still don't, I guess.
I'm sure Adam can follow up tomorrow, as he'd said before.
We need advice from council. I'm not, if.
Well, I was thinking about that A and R we did down here on Oak Ave. And I think the difference there was the plan showed the two existing lots and how it was all going to get reconfigured. So we approved a plan that basically would take this plan and show, you know, if it's going to be conveyed to Emily Kelly, would show it combined.
It would show it combined. It wouldn't create a non-conforming lot.
So get a signed P and S conditional upon the approval of the A and R, and then you can put the language of who it's to be conveyed to.
Okay. So I'll give Adam a call tomorrow so we can figure.
So in that case, there's no reason to meet on Thursday because chances of them getting that before Thursday are pretty slim, I would think.
Well, if we can figure out the language tomorrow.
The language is identifying who it's going to be conveyed to, is I think what you're hearing from us.
Or show a plan that shows it becoming part of so-and-so's property.
So if I.
But you have to identify that on the plan.
Correct. Okay. And if I were to get that plan into tomorrow, then the Thursday.
I'm available to meet.
I'm available Thursday as well.
I'm available too, but I don't want to do it if we don't have the plan.
Okay, yeah.
And I think it would be beneficial to distribute a digital copy just so we can see it prior to the meeting, not that we end up at the meeting and.
Correct, yeah. All right.
So it will state who it's going to, it was a parcel to be conveyed or combined with, whatever parcel.
Yeah.
6:00 PM.
Okay. I appreciate you guys working with me. Thank you.
Best of luck. All right, we've moved on.
Without me, apparently.
Minutes approval.
Yep.
Yeah, you're not much use tonight. You couldn't answer our questions.
Still trying to shake vacation brain off.
Vacation after the vacation. All right, so when we're up to the minutes approval, have we all reviewed the minutes they were sent to us?
Yes. Make a motion that we approve the minutes for August 12th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then the public hearing?
Make a motion that we approve the August 12th, 2019 minutes for the unitary public hearing.
Second.
Oh, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Community reports, capital planning. We have tentative schedule. I think it was the 20th. No, couldn't have been the 23rd, 24th, 24th. I think it was the 24th. We're going to be meeting soon. We're going to start meeting again. Stormwater task force, we met recently. I don't know if it was between the last meeting and this meeting.
It's the 14th of August, 15th of August?
Um, anyway, we met with the consultants and we revised our proposal. They gave us a new proposal for revised requirements. And it came in about twice as much as they had submitted in the first time, but still well under another one. And we discussed it and decided to go with it. We are going to need to be doing a lot of things for compliance. We have to have our MS4, our MS4 and R notice by the end of July?
Our notice of intent was done last year. We have to have our annual report in by the end of September.
Okay. I thought we had something at the end of June, June, July?
The permit year ends at the end of June.
Okay. Agricultural commission, we met last Thursday. It was a quick meeting. We made quorum. One market manager was there. Basically, the majority of it was market discussion, and the market is going fabulous. We've had more than 30 people submit forms to be vendors. More than 20 of those, I believe, were for the full season. And we're typically getting between 16 and 18 vendors every Sunday. So it is.
Is the area big enough?
It is getting smaller.
Getting tight.
Yep.
So is there another place that we could go to?
Well, there's a big 30,000 square foot building behind it with 2.4 acres, so that's a possibility.
Well, I mean, the art fair was over by the Kids Kingdom too, and that worked out really well. So another thing to think about.
Right? Yep, yep. And the library has offered use of their space, I believe, in the past. And I'm not sure if that was before Mira came in or not, but, you know, there are definitely options. Definitely options. We really like the spot where the visibility is awesome.
Well, I was going to say, you get the benefit.
Yeah, I think you get some.
Well, I was going to say, you get the benefit of the four-way entrance and the lights.
Drop by traffic at that, right. So, yeah, there has been discussion about talking to whoever we need to about expanding. And so that's it for the AgCom. Open spaces, is Greg?
Yeah, it's Greg. I'll just give you a quick, we've got a thing from the state on what we need to do, what we need to address. That's been, work's been divvied up amongst everybody, and we'll be meeting again in a few weeks to hopefully put all that information in the plan.
So that, okay. And land acquisition?
That's Greg.
You're not going? Oh, okay. Green Communities probably still hasn't met. Which ones you, Tanner?
I don't have any.
You don't have any?
I don't have any.
Oh, we should share.
I was MRPC.
Ducked down really low when you guys were giving them.
Rhonda was MRPC.
We definitely need to share.
I'm on MRPC.
So we'll need an, we'll need a new MJTC rep.
MJTC.
If you want to volunteer, that would save us some time.
For MJTC?
Yeah.
That's really outside my wheelhouse, I think, but...
You want to take MRPC back? You don't have to, I'm just...
Yeah, Thursdays are tough.
We can wait till Greg gets...
Thursdays are tough for me, too, so...
We're going to blame Greg on postponing half our schedule tonight. So I guess that's the end of our committee reports. So directors items, building committee?
So, there was a vote at town meeting last spring to allocate a pool of money in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for an engineering study for the design of a potential town office building, school office building, and PAC studio at the TC Passios School. The Board of Selectmen has formed a building committee for that project in order to facilitate the town manager appointing a review committee. They're going to be one and the same by the charter. The planning board is to appoint a member of the planning board to such committee. So you folks need to decide who, who wants to do it and...
All right, so I have a question.
Memorialize it.
I have a question on how you presented that to us. You said that it was an engineering study.
Correct.
It is the first engineering study and not the third architectural study?
My understanding is that they're calling it an engineering study because there are, it's, it's an actual design. So there will be formal cost estimates associated with it, as opposed to, in the past, what has been used as industry standard per square foot.
Right.
It will be actual, it will actually involve looking at the building, identifying the systems, and a reasonably dialed-in estimate of the cost of the work that would be proposed to do such.
So after this hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of the other two studies, then we're actually going to have some numbers that people can ask questions about, and answers will be produced, rather than, oh, that was just an escalator number that I added to the last one and...
That is my understanding. This is, this is building-specific, whereas the other studies have been multiple building survey studies and have been conceptual. This is a more concrete design specifically to the building itself.
And my understanding is, the town manager presented at the town meeting was that this hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering would be the first step in engineering the complete...
Correct.
renovation, so you spend the hundred and fifty now, if it's going to cost a million in engineering, you only have to come up with eight fifty to fill out the engineering.
Correct.
So then ideally, the preliminary plan would come of this study?
Yes. This would be the first, this would be the building block of, of any attempt to move town offices to TC Passios.
All right. Do we want to blame Greg on this one, too, or do we want to...
I mean, I'd be willing to fill the role. I'd like to understand a little bit better what the scope is going to be at this stage in the game, because I feel like we're not really a building committee until town meeting authorizes...
And that's, that was what was brought up at the, at the, at the Board of Selectmen. They said, "We're not building anything," and town manager said, "I know, but I need to appoint a, an RFP review committee and a committee that goes along with this." And the board felt that appointing the building committee would, following that building committee appointment, would be the appropriate group of people to start shepherding that project through. And my understanding is that they would be looking to keep that group together, should this move beyond just this study.
Okay. So the concept is you, you start the process now, and if town meeting does...
Correct. And you have an educated group of individuals who are involved from the beginning and through the project to completion, and thus, then you, in theory, have a greater breadth of institutional knowledge that is shepherding the project along.
When do they plan on meeting?
I don't think that that has been determined.
Okay.
And I would expect that that would be a function of the members of the committee.
So essentially, if we wait till Greg's here, we shouldn't be holding up any part of this process.
The email does not have any definitive date on when they would like somebody appointed. I have a feeling I'll get a call from the town manager executive assistant tomorrow. Did you guys appoint someone last night? But I don't think the two...
Email do I get?
I don't think the two weeks would...
Yeah. I mean, I think that Greg's on a lot, and I think that, try to have him do this, too, but I don't, I don't want to exclude him if he's interested. I mean, I would be interested, but I'd be happy to defer to Tanner if he wants to do it.
And I know Greg was on the school building committee for a period of time when, with the board, and it seemed that he enjoyed that work, but I also don't know, as you said, I mean, there's a number of other committees that he's currently working on.
So we will wait until the ninth?
Is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
I think it makes sense.
The vacancy on the board has been advertised and posted. So I will clarify with the town manager through the chair of the Board of Selectmen what their expectation is for the process. Does the board have any desire to discuss their expectations for the process or how the process would shake out that I can convey? I know that was one of the concerns that was raised at the last meeting.
I think the process is well described in, well, not necessarily well described, but it is fully described in numerous different sections. Right?
It is in so much as a joint meeting of the two boards appoints the board member.
Appointment of elected official in a separate group...
Correct.
Pretty much wraps it up, so I think it's fairly clear. If we want, are you guessing, asking, do we want to interview?
That's what, because in, in five years, we've done this thrice?
Five different ways.
And it's been done different ways each time, so some of that was a function of the board at the time, some of it was a function of timing of things. I, I guess my preference would be to not have there be hard feelings because the process happened in one way, and there wasn't ever a discussion of, hey, we'd really like to see it go this way, or can we do these things? Because, yes, the process is described, but it's just described on what the final outcome is and how that final outcome is derived, not what steps get to the final outcome, at least the way that I've, I've read it. And if I'm missing something, I'm happy to, to hear.
Does anybody have any...
Well, I think the fundamental challenge with the way the process works is the fact that when we go into that joint meeting, we are outvoted. Regardless of who the candidates are, there's five planning board members and, five selectmen and four planning board members. And, you know, again, this came up at charter review, trying to modify the process to make it a little bit cleaner for the board that is looking to fill the vacancy. In my mind, the best thing to do is for us to have an opportunity to interview the applicant and make a recommendation. Whether the Board of Selectmen follow the recommendation, that's up to them.
Well, unless we get more than one applicant, then it's a moot point. And then on top of that, there are zero requirements for an elected official, zero.
Yep. Well, I guess my point with that is, if you get one applicant, you could not recommend the applicant.
But you could get, potentially, you could get two or three applicants. And I think that the planning board should have an opportunity to talk to each of them and think, and determine which one that they would prefer to recommend.
And you would like to see that happen prior to the joint meeting?
Yes.
I think so. I think it should be done prior.
And I think that's if we have more than one.
Right, if there's no, if we don't have more than one.
It makes zero sense to, to, to...
Have someone come to two meetings if there's only one person?
No, exactly. Well, not only that, it doesn't make any sense to have somebody come and apply and not recommend them and continue with four-member board.
Right, I would agree with that.
I just know in, in, it wasn't a planning board situation, in other situations, the board did not recommend the person, the selectmen put the person in the position, and it caused a lot of controversy and chaos, for whatever that's worth.
That was me, and I'm glad I brought controversy and chaos.
No, it wasn't.
Anyways, is it possible that we can reach out to the person who, who temporarily wanted to fulfill it last year, just before the...
Yeah, I will reach out to her.
Okay. And again, if you folks, if you guys know anybody, tell them, talk to them. I have, so...
I was bugging the Lockwoods at the market yesterday, trying to get one of them to put their name in the hat.
Yeah, Anna and I had gone back and forth.
Neither of them seemed too interested.
No.
Did we have a timeline to submit talent bags?
It's thirty days from ad.
And when was it advertised?
Uh, I, it's, it either went in last Friday, or it's going in this Friday.
So knowing that timeline would be good.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're into October at least.
Okay.
Solar energy, Off Street, the last thing I have is covenants from Arrow Estates. Have you had a chance to review them?
Did we get them? I didn't see them.
I sent them out before I went on vacation.
I don't remember seeing them.
I didn't get them.
I'm not going to say I didn't get them, but I have not seen them.
Yeah, I guess that's a better way.
I scanned them all as one large document and sent them out. I have them here, I've reviewed them, they're carbon copies of our rules and regulations, all nine, with the exception of they have parcel information in them, and they're signed.
About the subdivision that had the issues? The lot line had to change?
They corrected that.
Okay, but it did, is the covenant corrected?
Covenant doesn't need to be corrected. It, it, because what the covenant is and what it does is it prevents the sale of anything other than the project in totality. So if, if, if it's a twenty-lot subdivision, you can't sell a lot. You can sell all twenty, the whole project, to another developer, but you cannot sell individual lots.
Yeah, you did send it out on August fifteenth.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I felt a little crazy for a minute.
Yeah, no, you definitely did.
I, I was worried that I, I did something like shut the computer off before it sent. This is our form. This was developed by someone who works for the town of Lunenburg. It, the wording is the same, with the exception, as I said, of, of the locus information.
Okay, so they're all the same?
They're all the same. And I did go through each one of them page by page and read every word in there. So I don't know if you want to sign them, if you don't...
I have no issues.
I have no issues.
Okay, then why don't we do that afterward, so that we don't have to sit here and sign on camera, as much fun as everybody enjoys? Notice in communications you've, you've had scanned to you?
Meaning, as we've already added economic development to nine, solar to twenty-three, we've got Unitil on the twenty-fourth, tentatively, right?
Yep. Oh, that was the other thing about that. The twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. The selectmen will not have a quorum on the twenty-third, but they will on the twenty-fourth. And they made the request that, if possible, the planning board move the hearing to that night and attend their meeting and hold the hearing there.
Not real thrilled with that process.
Well, the, the only reason they asked is they wanted to have a quorum of the selectmen. And I said I would inquire with the board as to whether they were available and/or willing to do so.
So I've, I've reached, I've had some conversations with citizens, and they were, they were not pleased about our focus on the trees and the scenery and the scenic. They were concerned that we didn't have discussions about the loss of power and the citizens being out of power. However, it came to us as a scenic road bylaw application. So technically, we are supposed to be looking at the trees and the scenic. If it, if it is acted upon by the planning board to deny the scenic road application, then it defaults to the Board of Selectmen as owners of all the trees in the right of way.
But they would, the owner of the tree, no, they still need the permission of the planning.
They still need the permission of the scenic road. The, the shade tree hearing for the, the tree warden is what would default to the Board of Selectmen. So in order to cut a shade tree, the tree warden is required to hold the public hearing. If someone protests in writing prior to or at the hearing, then the Board of Selectmen are required to determine whether or not the tree can be felled.
But we would still have to act on...
You'd still have to act on the scenic road, correct.
They still need planning board approval.
And my understanding is the selectmen would be providing approval for the trees on town land.
Right, not on the public, on the private land.
Oh, any shade tree.
Per the Shade Tree Act.
Okay.
So that's on...
As it falls in, as it's, as defined in that chapter of MGL.
So that's on top of our...
Correct.
Scenic road. And we're not to deliberate on that at all, right?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm concerned with trying to hold our public hearing and the selectmen's. Not that we're, I'm against having a joint meeting, because I think that's a good idea, but if we're going to continue our hearing on the scenic trees, I don't know how we can do that when we're not running the meeting.
But you would be running the meeting.
How?
Because it's your hearing.
But how would it be our hearing if we're sitting down there and they're all up here?
Maybe you all, maybe you all sit, maybe you all sit down there.
Because in the scenic, when we're dealing with the scenic part of the hearing, it's up to the chair of the planning board to run this, that hearing.
That's correct.
So I don't know how the chairman of the planning board can run a hearing when he's sitting down there.
And, and maybe everybody sits down there. And maybe, maybe there's a negotiation between, or a discussion between the chair of the planning board and the chair of the Board of Selectmen about how that works. I mean, I understand your concern, and I think that there's ways to mitigate some of, some of those issues.
Not that I'm against, I want to be clear, I'm not against having a joint meeting, but I think if we're moving our public hearing to someone else's public meeting, it's a little concerning to me.
Well, and, you know, frankly, I watched the last meeting, and I was aghast at the way that I let the room be set up. I mean, they were stuck between the two boards, and they had no way to actually listen and talk to everybody at the same time. So if, if all of the board sits at the table down there, and they present from one end, that may make...
Right, and then after that, right.
The whole thing a little bit more, a little less confrontational. I mean, they were kind of, you know, sandwiched between, they were caught in an ambush, really. You guys could have given them all the praise in the world, and they're still kind of doing this the whole time. So, and, and, you know, I, I take the, the blame for that, and I've apologized to Unitil for that. But, you know, if, if no one's up here and everybody's down there, maybe that makes everything, it eliminates that disparity between who's on the stage and who's not, and...
The challenge I see with it is, I feel like the one should go in front of the other. I, I don't like the concept of having both there. I would like us to be able to have our discussion and formulate our thoughts independent of the Board of Selectmen. They're there as the selectmen and the shade tree thing, we're the scenic road thing, and I think... And I think we should be able to formulate our own opinions and not be influenced by their thought process.
But I thought at the meeting.
No offense to them, I'm just, in my mind.
And I'm, and I'm definitely hearing you, but I thought we decided at the last meeting to hold a joint meeting, didn't we?
We did, on the 23rd.
I thought we.
On the 23rd, and then later on, I found out that, well, we knew that the chair and vice-chair were not going to be available. And then a third member was not available on the 23rd.
So while I understand, Tanner, and I don't disagree, I think we kind of committed to trying to schedule a joint meeting.
Which would be the 24th, right? Or?
I'm just concerned, I do think it's two separate, separate issues. But I understand the need to try to get everybody together for a hearing because we're basically all want to hear the same information. But we do have definitely different roles. Our role is the scenic road. Their role is the shade trees and as tree owners. So it's different than our role. But the other side of that is, as tree owners, they would want to attend our public hearing, so. I'm not against moving it, but I am against, we have to have some understanding of how the meetings would be run because I want to be clear that the scenic road hearing is our hearing. And I think if we all sit down there and then they move when we leave, or.
Honestly, I don't think there was a problem last time. And it's, elevation makes no difference whatsoever. Everybody has a microphone. Cameras can get everybody in the room. As long as, like I said, the applicant's not in between the two, I don't see an issue, honestly, so.
I just think that, and did we continue it to a date certain last night?
We did.
How do we change that?
Well, we continued it to the 23rd. And if, if you were, you, the royal you of the planning board was willing to meet on the 24th, on the 23rd, we wouldn't continue it to the 24th.
Because we have a meeting on the 23rd, anyway.
Correct. And we would just notify Unitil ahead of time that, and, and I, you know, I think they've been made aware that this is something that was asked for.
Well, then.
We also need to advertise it before, before the 23rd, don't we?
No, we just need to post a.
I think we should. I think we need to. We're obligated to the people that were planning on coming here on the 23rd not to make them come back on the 24th.
Well, there were two people who showed up. And I know of a third person who has expressed interest, and I could reach out to those three people.
There's a few more.
Well, I think, I think one of those people would be involved with some of the other people who have, I'm sure you've spoken to. And if I informed her of the change, she would happily pass the information along.
I mean, given the fact that we continued to a date certain on the 23rd, I think it just makes sense to move forward with things on the 23rd as part of our regularly scheduled meeting.
We can, we can open it up and discuss it.
You don't even have to open, that's up to you.
Okay.
You can open it up and discuss it, you can continue, right, you can not even open it and continue to the 24th. That's.
So if we have people.
The moving, the moving it from a legal logistical perspective, as far as the hearing, is, is simple. It would be the same as anything else that comes that's not ready to be heard on a certain night is continued to another date certain.
Why don't we do this, though? Why don't we open the hearing on the 23rd? If we want to have a discussion, we can, and it doesn't need to. A date, our ability to go to the selectmen's meeting on the 24th, right?
But it does.
Why?
Because we need to post 48 hours ahead of time. So we need to post the Thursday before if you plan to go to the selectmen on the 24th. Unitil would need to know that they're coming on the 23rd and the 24th.
Well, yeah.
Right.
But.
That's what I said before. We need to post for the 24th before the deadline to post.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, and the selectmen need to know that you're planning to.
Going to attend.
Be there and coming, because they're gonna shape their agenda around that. So I'm not saying don't have a discussion on the 23rd, or any, or don't have Unitil come. I'm saying if you, they want you to come on the 24th so they can participate in the scenic road hearing. And it would be better for everyone involved the sooner we decide if you're willing to do that and how we're going to do that, so that everything could be planned. I don't know that there's a lot to be gained from having a discussion on the 23rd and then continuing to the 24th to vote with the selectmen. I feel like that would.
Well, we're not voting with the selectmen, that's the thing.
You're, you're voting on your own, but if you're gonna continue the hearing to the 24th, one would expect you wouldn't vote till that night at a minimum.
Yeah, because I want to be clear, our vote is different.
For the 24th, we have created an obligation to be there.
Correct.
Even if we open and close and vote on the 23rd.
Correct.
I will say I wouldn't want to vote on the 24th myself. I mean, the 23rd, I would want to attend the meeting on the 24th. So I would like to hear from the selectmen. I know that the tree warden, I had a conversation with him the other day. He's looked at the trees and does not believe that all of those have to be cut, so I want to hear that information.
Less than 50%.
Yeah, so I want to hear that. So in that case, I would prefer to just move it to the 24th myself.
Well, there is no moving because we did continue it to a date certain. And if people show up.
We'll continue.
And we'll open it and we'll have a discussion. And, and I already have the 24th on my calendar, and I am available, so.
Well, and we can head most of that off at the pass by posting to the Facebook that the planning board would be looking to continue to the 24th. We can inform the people who are here, the people who've communicated with myself, yourself, the town manager, that they have concerns and they may be coming forward to say, "We're continuing to the 24th."
But if there are people here on the 23rd and they want to speak, we let them speak.
That's, that's up to you.
But, yeah.
Because they may or may not be able to come back.
Well, the, so the question room, the question stands right now if we are available and willing to go to the Board of Selectmen on the 24th.
I am.
Okay. So I don't think there needs to be a whole lot of discussion about this.
I want to just ask one more question, or make one more statement that involves a question.
Okay.
You just mentioned, Paula, that if people are here, we let them speak.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to inform Unitil that they need to be here on the 23rd?
That's up to Unitil, but I don't want to tell somebody, "We're not gonna hear it, you have to come back tomorrow." If they got a babysitter or they, that's not fair.
I just, let me, let me finish, because if we take testimony without the applicant present, that can be problematic for the public hearing process.
Well, that, but if we inform the applicant.
So that, but that's what I'm saying. So you're, you're saying that we inform the applicant that on the 23rd, there may be testimony and it would be in their best interest to be here.
That's up to them. If there's no one here to talk, if there's no one here.
And as long as they're notified of that, then that relieves any concern, right?
Again, I just want to be clear that.
Yeah, I don't want to turn away the public. If they read the paper and are coming here and they got a babysitter or whatever.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that I understand what the board's position is so I can communicate that back to the applicant.
Well, that's my position. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but that's my position. I mean, it would be up to the individual if they want to come back another night. But if someone can't, I think we should let them be able to speak their piece. But I don't have a problem posting a planning board meeting for the following evening so that we can attend the selectmen's meeting.
And then is the expectation that we would take a vote on the 24th?
Well, depends.
I don't see any expectation.
There's no expectation.
I just got the information from, from Unitil. I, well, I just saw it today. I haven't filtered through it and distributed it, but that'll be going out.
And we don't have a timeline on the scenic road hearing?
No.
All right, so I think that's all cleared up. Ongoing items?
We think covered all of them.
Super. Any public comment? Any board comment?
No.
All right, then I would pick up the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.